For the course of the last several months, they worked with department directors, staff, and worked on benchmark data and information, surveying other communities in the area. Melina Mays from McGrath is here to present the information. The executive report was included in your packet. She will provide that information. So you all know the same information will be provided to staff in various staff meetings tomorrow, so they have that. We look forward to any comments or questions that you all might have as we go through this report. And then we can talk a little bit at the end with next steps with regard to the compensation plan.
Just want to get a little instruction from you. I probably should have done this in advance on advancing. Or you could use a clip.
Super excellent. Thank you very much. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Okay, talking to the mic because that's what I've been instructed, talking to the mic. I can follow, I can follow instructions really well. My name is Melina Halverson Mays. I am a consultant with McGrath Human Resources Group and we are located in Wonder Lake, Illinois, which is just over the Wisconsin border into, just into Illinois, although I personally am from Wisconsin. And I loved coming down here today to forty-four degree temperatures because I don't, I won't get forty-four degree temperatures for the next several months. So I absolutely appreciate the weather. We've been working on this project for the last several months since last summer. And what I'm going to do is run through with you the highlights of the executive report. You have a copy of that and I do encourage you to read it. I will give you the highlights this evening. And if you have any. We're seeing green again. Excellent. All right. A little bit about McGrath, we have been in business for the past twenty-one years and we predominantly serve public sector organizations. About ninety-nine percent of our clients are public sector. We serve counties, cities, towns, townships, special districts, et cetera, et cetera. And we specialize in human resources consulting along with public safety consulting, which is not part of this particular study. But within human resources, our real true focus is on compensation and benefits. And so, and that certainly is what we were here to provide for the city. What I'm going to do here this evening and just walk through the methodology of what we did and how we derived at our recommendations that are in the back of the executive report. I'm not going to read the PowerPoint word for word for you, but what we were asked to do was to take a look at Smithville's comparable organizations, what your competition around you is paying in terms of wages, along with doing then an analysis of your positions so that we could create and develop a new compensation system that we felt is going to be more competitive for, for the city going forward. Okay? All right. Methodology, how did we do this? The first thing that we did was we came onsite last summer. It's kind of hard to believe it's been about six months since we started this project. And we met with each of your department directors so that we had an understanding of what their programs and services and operations are at a department level. That helps us then also understand what the positions are responsible to do. So that when we go out to the market, we are doing a likeness comparison of responsibilities with those comparable positions. So we're making sure that we're comparing apples to apples in terms of wages. We went with your city administration. We met with all of your directors. And then we gave an assignment and that was for all of your positions, not necessarily your employees, but your positions to complete what's called a position questionnaire document. That was the first part of the employee engagement process with our project. And where we asked the employees to provide us, what is it that you do so that we had a better understanding? That helped us do this internal equity look because when we get a little bit further in, you're going to find that right now currently with the model that you have, there really is no consideration of how positions might be similar in term, but yet their wages are not necessarily similar. And so that position questionnaire helped us with that. After that, we also went out to twelve public organizations to collect market data. We collected four data points, which with for each of our positions, we'll talk about those here in a little bit more detail. The minimum, the midpoint, the maximum, and the incumbent, and that will become important here in just a moment. And then when we came back with all of our recommendations, we actually sat down again with your administration and with each of your directors to go through those recommendations so that they had an opportunity to offer feedback in the event that maybe we got something wrong or we misinterpreted something. So we go through this process knowing then that because it was a highly collaborative process that involved all aspects of your organization, that we feel very comfortable with these recommendations. This is a list of the comparable organizations that we collected the public market data from. It is also listed in your executive report. The organizations that were selected were based on conversations that we had with your city administration and your department directors. We asked the question, who are you competing with? Who are you losing your human capital to? Who has programs and services that are similar to your particular departments? And this was the list that was then developed. All right. The first thing we're going to talk about as soon as I get a, kind of wet my mouth here. We're going to take a look at your market analysis and we're going to compare how Smithville's wages compared to the external market. When we do this analysis, we put it into what's called a comp ratio. And let me explain what that is here before I show you the graphs. A comp ratio is Smithville wages in comparison to the external market. And we boiled that down to a very specific number. We want that number to be as close to fifty percent as possible because we put it into a ratio, which is a percentage. Fifty percent then means that that is average market. So that means that, that your number is, is very similar to theirs. And if you're too high or you're too low, then that means that you're either overcompensating or you're undercompensating. So the numbers we want to see are fifty percent. However, in the world of compensation, we also know that there's going to be ebbs and flows, right? The compensation that the city had yesterday is already outdated today because wage increases or hires and terminations occur. And so because of that, there's a standard practice where you will accept plus or minus ten percent of your wages. So if you look at those comp ratios, we want to see numbers between forty percent and sixty percent. And we say, based on that, then those are market competitive wages. With that, one little caveat, twenty-twenty-one, everything has been unusual. And twenty-twenty and twenty-twenty-one is the market. And right now I would say that positions with comp ratios in the lower forties, forty to forty-four percent, we, we say that they're still market competitive, but we call them at risk. And we are calling them at risk because it's very possible that based upon the market, they really truly are not competitive anymore. All right. So how did Smithville compare? Overall, the first graph that you're showing is what your minimum rates look like, so your higher rates. And when I looked at this, when I did, when after I was done with the analysis, I was really rather pleased because what it identifies is that your starting rates at this point of the benchmarked positions, they really are aligned to the market. You've got about twelve percent of the positions that are too far under the market. And you've got about twenty percent that are at risk. But overall, it, when you consider those at-risk positions, about eighty-eight percent, they are comparable to the market. And I thought, this is wonderful. And then we kept moving on through your pay ranges and that's when things started turning. And, and you're going to hear a common theme. The next, the next data set that we took a look at was the, the city's midpoint and how that midpoint compared to the external market. And to try to get an idea of if your midpoint of your salary ranges is actually considered the market. And what we found is on the screen, that fifty-seven percent of your midpoints are falling short of what is, what is out there within the market. And so what that is an indication of is you can, your, your salaries are starting okay. But as you progress through your range, you're no longer market competitive. Okay? There's a couple of reasons why that might be happening. And part of that is, is some of your pay ranges, they're all different. Some of them are really narrow, some of them are really wide. And because of that, we don't really know where that market point is in these salary ranges. And so this was an indication that yes, indeed, we don't have a true market point anywhere in your salary range. This next slide is what I would consider a very accurate reflection of where your wages are in terms of the city against your comparable organizations. This is your actual employees' wages against the actual employees in other organizations. Okay? This normally tells me what the health, the overall health of the organization and their wages are. And what we found was that on average, thirty-seven percent of your positions are being paid under the market. And you have another thirty percent that are at risk. And that's a pretty significant amount. Now, we can look at your demographics because if you have a lot of new employees, that might be one of the reasons why you have so many positions that are under the market. Because we know in public sector, there's normally a range. You give employees a period of time to work through that range. But when we looked at your demographics, you have a very senior group of employees here. And really, what we are finding is that even though they've been here for a period of time, the ranges that you have, they are preventing the employees from able, from being able to earn the wages that are being earned outside of the organization. And I'll illustrate that here in just a second. The last part that we took a look at then was your maximum rates. And what we found, which is probably the most startling, is that the majority, eighty-eight percent of your positions will not earn the same amount or will not come to the same amount that you will have in other organizations. So that means that eighty-eight percent of your positions will never be able to earn on average what is being earned elsewhere. Okay? So what that, what that indicates then is that we have to push that, that, that maximum out. So the, what I did then was based upon that incumbent information that I showed you on the last slide, along with this maximum, on this slide, I put the two together. And this is what we found. The blue line is currently your maximums. Okay? And you'll notice on the far left side, it's pretty flat, actually. It's pretty flat. And then it spikes up at the very end of the, of the chart. Overlaying that is what the external comparables for those same positions are earning. And what this chart shows is that half of the city's positions, okay? Their maximums are earning less than what the actual market incumbents are earning right now. And so what that means then is that really literally your employees have to get to the maximum before they're going to start earning market competitive wages. And, and one of the, one of the things that we have to be cognizant of is how long does it take an employee to get through your salary range? Because employees are no longer tolerant of this. They want to get to market competitive wages faster. We need to be a little bit more competitive. Actually, we need to be a lot more competitive in this current market. All right. So we identified a couple of other issues. So that was the, the look at the market. And I'll just breeze through these here real quickly. You have forty-seven different individual pay ranges. And for the size of your organization, that's, that's pretty significant. You had some pay ranges that were off by just a matter of pennies. And there was no internal equity, which means if you have a position in parks that might be similar to a position in public works, there really was no consideration that perhaps they might, they should be paid at the same type of wage because you're looking at the same type of qualifications or responsibilities. And so as a result, that's why you have forty-seven pay ranges. Your spread, that varies, six percent to forty-eight percent. And that is why there really is no market rate for any of your positions. And we now know that your midpoint is not the market, which is what we typically see. You compound that with what's happening in the recruitment world right now. On a national level, public sector has a decline of applicant volume by about thirty-seven percent. And that was a pre-COVID number, waiting to see what the post-COVID number is going to come in at. But this has been a number that we have been paying attention to for about the past, since about twenty thirteen. And this number keeps growing and growing. No longer are your applicants wanting to come to work for public sector. They have a lot other opportunities. At, public sector might be a stepping stone for them, but it's not necessarily a career. And in addition to that, right now, government turnover is at a rate of about twenty-one percent. So that means one out of every five employees, they're leaving. So you're not, no, you no longer have the tenure. Now, Smithville's very, you're very fortunate that your tenure is very high right now. But we're going to look at those demographics here in a little bit. And you're going to have to be prepared for continual turnover. And, and so you're going to see that your, your tenure is going to start slipping. We found some compression and really quickly, the, the compression really is the, the separation between ranks or between positions within a department and trying to fix that within your, your salary schedule. Other considerations for you is when you're looking at your wages, you're in the Kansas City metro area. And that means that your applicants and your employees, they have a lot of options, public sector and private sector. And so we want to make sure that your wages are competitive enough where your applicants want to consider Smithville as an employer of choice. But we also then took a look at the private sector. And this is sometimes a little bit challenging. And for those of you who are working in the private sector, you know that wages do not have to be disclosed, like they have to be in the public. And so what we did was we, we reached out to multiple employers within this area and spoke with them or researched what their entrance rates were. We, we reached out to approximately twenty-seven businesses. And we analyzed what their entrance rates were. And what we found is that at an entry level position, the, the city is paying anywhere from two to four dollars an hour less. And if you have a more experienced or technically skilled position, it's upwards of seven to eleven dollars less. Now, that, no one is saying that you're going to have to pay private sector wages. I don't think that, that, I don't think that that's the case at all. But you have to be aware that that's what the private sector is paying right now. So we need to make sure that your salary schedule is competitive. All right. The other, the last layer here for you to, to take, or at least understand or know, your demographics. And as I said, you have good tenure. Right now, your average tenure is eight-point-seven-five years of service. And we're hovering somewhere around five, six years nationwide. So you are breaking, you're breaking tenure. But what this, what these charts are showing me is you have some significant tenure for individuals who are age sixty and above. Those are on the, on your graph, they are the, on the far right-hand side, they make up about eighteen percent of your workforce. Those individuals are going to get ready to retire. So when you've been here for twenty, twenty-five years, right? You have a lot of institutional knowledge that's going to go away and you have to refill those positions, right? So what, when you look at that graph, you've got a number of people that are in the forty to fifty-year area, time, time, age-wise, and their service levels, they're, they're holding, right? Well, we want to keep them, right? We absolutely want to hold on to those individuals because they've got the experience and they're going to be your next round of, of leadership. On the far left-hand side, that is what is going to be a little bit more, should be a little bit more concerning for you. Because for anyone who's under the age of forty here at the city right now, that's forty-nine percent of your workforce. That's half of your workforce. They're your mobile people. They're the ones that are not afraid to go change jobs because they're going to go make money elsewhere. And they know that they can hop around and they're not afraid to do it. And the trickle effect here in recent years now is, is that the people who are forty and fifty, they're, they're looking at the younger generation and saying, hey, that's not so bad. And so the workforce is now becoming a little bit more mobile. And so the takeaway of this is you're going to be losing individuals because of retirement. And right now, you're, you're not retaining the younger generation. And so this is another reason why you're going to want to make sure that your compensation system is up to date and market competitive. All right. So based on all that doom and gloom, and I promise it's not as doom and gloom as, yeah, as, as it sounds. We have created a new salary schedule. The recommendation is in your executive report. And when we talk about, you know, how to structure, you know, early on when we had to structure this, this new schedule, we talked about what the compensation philosophy of the organization should be. And whether or not the city can afford to pay market average wages or if you're in a financial situation where you have to pay under-market or if you're in a financial position where you can pay over-market. Based on the, the market information that I found in, in discussions with your city administration and you've got a lot going on right now, and then there might be some other opportunities with benefits. We felt that it was okay to recommend to, to the elected officials, to the body, that you establish your compensation philosophy at average market. Okay? So what that means then is that I developed these salary ranges based upon that fifty percent. Okay? There's going to be some organizations that are going to pay more than you. And there's going to be some that are going to pay less than you. And we're hoping that Smithville is going to be somewhere in the middle. Okay? That structure is about thirteen pay grades. And how we've structured it is continuing to be in a range form. We have identified that average market rate. It's no longer a surprise what the going rate for a position is. And that range now has been built around that rate. So between your minimum and your market rate is about a fifteen percent range. And then overall, you have a forty percent range with the exception of the last pay grade, which is your department directors. And the reason why your department directors has been given a little bit more broad range is because we have some variations in your directors in terms of the market. But for, from a internal comparability aspect, we felt it was important that all of your executive leadership team should be placed in one, one respective pay grade. And so in order to make sure that we're market competitive with all of those positions, we had to broaden that range a little bit. So ultimately, what we're recommending is the new salary schedule. It is in the executive, executive report and for all of the positions to be placed in each of the pay grades that we have recommended. Tomorrow, I'm going to be spending time with the employees, explaining to them how we place positions on the salary schedule. I've got a short slide here for you in a minute. And then after that, then what we have to do is we have to say, all right, well, now we've got all of these positions on the salary range. What, what are we going to put the employees? So our recommendation is a standard methodology across the board. Okay? So all employees are being treated the same. And that's really, really very important to know. If an employee is under the minimum rate, then our recommendation is get them up to the minimum. You've got to get them up into the new pay range. And then there are going to be some employees that they are already within the range. They are, their wages are, are within our recommendations. And that could very well be because they've been here for a period of time. But even so, because of that, we do have another recommendation that employees should also receive a three percent salary adjustment. So once they get into the range, then you adjust them up three percent. Okay? That is separate from your merit program, which will come to you in next, later in this year, I'm sorry. In May of twenty-twenty-two, that's not part of the implementation. Okay? And finally, let's talk about now that we've worked on creating a new salary schedule for you, how you're going to maintain it going forward. Whenever you have placed a position, and let's just talk about a custodian because the city doesn't have that position. So if we were to say that we want the custodian or the market says the custodian starts at twelve dollars an hour. If you, if the salary ranges don't change on an annual basis over time and that custodian continues to have a higher rate at twelve dollars an hour, for the first year, it's good. For the second year, it's probably okay. But by that third year, twelve dollars an hour is no longer going to be market competitive. And you find that your ranges are, are out of date. And then you've, you're right back to where you began, where your, your, your recruiting rates are too low and you're not going to be competitive enough. So what our recommendations are, is for the city to maintain this schedule in two different manners simultaneously. The first one is that on an annual basis, that there be a cost of living adjustment made to the entire salary schedule. And that is going to be based off of an economic indicator that's going to be selected by the city, whether it's CPI or some sort of a local indicator. So that twelve dollars an hour for that custodian, next year might be twelve dollars and thirty cents an hour so that you are maintaining pace with the rest of the external market. Okay? The second thing that we want you to continue to do, which is what you're doing right now, is allowing the employees to progress through the schedule. And that is not a cost of living adjustment. Okay? That is based on their performance. So the employees will see that cost of living adjustment. But then separately, they should also have the opportunity to progress through that range on a merit-type basis because that's how they're going to be accelerating through the range. There may be a third option, and that would be something that's going to be very limited to administration, that if there's a market, if there's a market adjustment that might be needed because they're having some challenges with recruitment or retention on a specific position. Let's go back to the custodian again, that, you know, your custodian's making twelve dollars and thirty cents an hour. But all of a sudden, there's been a boom and everyone needs a custodian and you need to bump those up to twelve seventy-five. Then, you know, your administration might come to you to say, we need to make a market adjustment for this specific classification. It's important to know that market adjustments need to be for positions, not people. Okay? And it has to be reflective of a market change. The last recommendation that I have then, that will be in your executive report is ongoing. How do you maintain this system ongoing? Because we're talking about the, this on an annual basis. But every once in a while, you need to go back out to the market and you need to make sure that the salary ranges are still holding to the market. We recommend every three to five years, the city do what we call a market analysis. And it's not, it's certainly not the level that we did here this time around. An internal equity analysis is not necessarily needed. It really is just kind of a dip your toe in the market and make sure that your pay ranges are okay. So that if there needs to be any adjustments or if there's any kind of peaks within the market, we'll be able to catch that. And then we can make adjustments on those ranges. So right now, we say every three to five years, because the market is so intense right now, you know, we are, we are recommending closer to three years. But if things start leveling out again, like, you know, they have been in years past, I think the city can go up to five years before needing that again. All right. The rest of the slides are primarily for employees tomorrow. We're going to discuss with them how we place positions. For your information, we use four different factors. The first one is the external market. On those graphs that I showed you, the second one is the position analysis, which is the position questionnaire document. The third item is compression, that separation between the different levels or the different ranks within a department. And then the fourth one is internal comparability. So how are like positions across the organization, how do we look at those? For example, like administrative assistance. Okay? Couple other just minor things and then we'll get on to questions. And really, this might be just in case you are asked. We have made some recommendations for some classification or title changes. We have collapsed some levels. We felt that there were some positions that they have different levels to get higher pay, but not because of differing responsibilities. So as a result of that, then, we collapsed those down so that there are less levels. And for the levels that are left, we helped to define what those level differences are going to be. And in the job description. And in the job description project, which comes next, that Anna and I will start kicking off probably tomorrow. We will identify what those, what those differences are so that the employees have a clear path of what those changes are going to be. All right. So that's it for compensation. I'll just very quickly talk about benefits. Because we were asked to take a look at benefits. We took a look at your, at your health insurance and we took a look at your time off. I will say that we did meet with employees midway through this process where we asked employees. To come together in small groups where we could ask some compensation questions and we got some clarifications on their position questionnaires. We asked some questions about, about benefits as well. We did get some feedback on, on that. I, I think overall, what is happening here with, at the city of Smithville. There's a real positive energy that I'm feeling with the recent health insurance changes. And I, I, my right, my sole recommendation on the health insurance is continue the path that you're on. You have a, a new broker. I understand the city is, is engaging the employees with. A, a committee of sorts to, to discuss health insurance and continue to do that. You have a lot of outside forces with insurance right now. There are employers, public and private, that are offering one hundred percent paid health insurance, and that is a true consideration. So the steps that Smithville took here, this, that in recent months has been very, very positive in your position. In the market in terms of your health insurance. As far as holiday, this one's just a quick one. Consider it at some point in the future, you may want to offer a personal holiday, just so that individuals who might observe. Less traditional holidays than what, than what you normally would find in public sector will have that opportunity as well. And last but not least, vacation, we did get some feedback on vacation, some struggles with being able to use them. Or having some, you know, maximum issues and whatnot. We did find when we did an analysis of your vacation, that when, when an employee has been here longer. They are not necessarily earning as much as the competitive market would indicate. So we do recommend that you make a change on a, in addition, an additional level of accrual for vacation. For some of your more senior tenured individuals with sixteen years of service or greater. And we've also given you some options to consider or for city administration to consider and bring forward in terms of how you can. Perhaps encourage individuals to take time off or what to do when, when individuals cannot take their vacation. Okay. I'm sorry, there's a lot of information to give you in a small amount of time, and I am available to answer questions.
First of all, thank you. Appreciate your time. Thank you for traveling in this weather, too. One of the volunteer opportunities I have is to serve on the Mid-America Regional Council Board with the Volker Alliance, trying to solve this problem. Because it's not just a city problem, it's a national problem, federal employees. People don't know that government service jobs exist or that they, what the benefits are. So I've shared this with a few people already. I will open it up to the board for questions. Who wants to go first? Alderman Hartman.
Thank you, Mayor. I echo Mayor's comments. Thank you very much for a good job on this. It's lots of information. Kind of stating the obvious, as we know, the city is primarily funded on sales tax. And the business growth that we've had here in the city has kind of allowed us to be in a position to afford these raises. So we're very blessed to have that opportunity. One of the things is, when you're studying specifically the compensation. And we understand where our healthcare is, a lot of times an employer, private employer, not a city employer. Will take that compensation and say, okay, this is what we're offering, plus the healthcare to total benefit package. Do cities or municipalities do that as well, or is it usually a separate? Study on that.
Well, and, and, you know, that's part of the reason why the, why we included benefits. Just so that you had an, you know, have an understanding or administration has an understanding of where they're at in the market. Because there are certainly some total compensation studies that, that do occur. The challenge with that is selling that to your applicant, right? You know, because your applicants aren't necessarily looking at it in a total compensation perspective. And they have varying, they have varying interests, right? So for some, it's the wage. For some, it's the insurance. For others, it's truly the pension. They want to come work for the pension. And so hopefully, what we've done, and, and I know that we didn't give a whole lot of detail in the, in the report on, on the insurance. But what we've done is we've given Cynthia an understanding of where your insurance at is at. In comparisons to the other organizations, so that they can look at it from a total compensation perspective. And give you recommendations on, you know, going forward then.
And the Alderman Hartman, if I could jump in also, not necessarily from a recruitment standpoint, but in looking at total compensation. One of the things that we've been doing for the last few years is around the time people get their W twos. They're also getting a statement from us that shows this is what you earn, but these are the other things that we contribute for you. So here is your total value to the city. And so we provide that on an annual basis to employees for their information as well, but we don't use it as a recruitment.
Thank you. Alderman Atkins, I think you got it.
When you do your market analysis, are you just staying close to Smithville or how, or how are you actually looking at? I mean, if you, if Columbia, Missouri is offering me one dollar more an hour, I'm not going to travel.
No, for, absolutely. I'm going to be a little bit geographically challenged here, okay? So the organizations are Clay County, Excelsior, Gladstone, Kearney. And if I'm butchering the names, I'm so sorry.
Butchered that one.
Liberty, um, North Kansas City.
With, with an easy travel distance.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, there, you know, certainly your director level, your executive levels. Those might extend outside of the local geography. But for the most part, your positions, you're going to find that you're, you know, you're going to want to try to pick up the, the local talent for sure.
Hard to get a boot in your family and house to, to earn a couple extra dollars somewhere if there's no houses. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And I, we say that jokingly, but the mayor of Kearney is watching this, so it's fine that you butchered it.
I think you mentioned that you were going, tomorrow you were going to kind of present this to, to the employees. I'm just curious, either you or Cynthia, I mean, do we anticipate any pain points with that discussion? Is anyone going to be irritated? You know, I know we're going to bump up, I think, three percent to those folks that may not get. Reclassification or whatnot, but I mean, do we, do we feel there's going to be any kind of issues with that?
You know, I honestly don't know. We provided information to the, we made the employees aware. That this information would be posted. I know there have been some discussions. It will be interesting to see how that goes. I know benefits have been a concern to employees. I know vacation and vacation time, vacation use has been a concern to employees. Compensation is, it's an ongoing issue. It's been a recruitment issue. It's also been, I don't know, I, I think it's a retention issue. I don't know if it's, it's been the full reason that, that we've seen some of the recruitment, the turnover that we have seen. There have been just some difficult things over the last few years. So it will be interesting to see how it goes and what questions do come up. I think employees will be curious as to what the plan is for moving forward. So it, they will, this will be good information, but as Malena has pointed out. This is the same information that will be presented to all employee groups as well. So they'll get the same information you all have and have the same access to the report.
Anything else on this side of the room? Alderman Smith?
Just going to say for my part, I read with a great deal of interest every word of your study and proposal. And I thought it was very astute, thorough. I think it's a, whoever had the foresight to move this forward, I think it's great for the city. So I don't have any questions. I think it was right on.
I'm glad we were able to get this into budget. So I think that you guys need a little direction on some of these items, correct?
It would be useful, you know, the, the memo that we provided, this is just providing information to you all. If there are any additional questions you all have, we're happy to, to answer those and bring information back. Information that was included in your packet included the cost of implementation. And when we look at implementation, it's really related to that, moving people to the minimum of the range or three percent. So, so kind of whatever that would be. We also, so there's a raw amount for that. And then we needed to add in the, the benefit costs associated with that, unemployment insurance, FICA, those sort of things. So the total cost there is just under a hundred sixty-five thousand dollars. Stephen is, has looked our fund balance. You know, we do have, we had a good year last year. Our fund balance far exceeds the forty percent minimum level that you all, the, the board has set as a policy. And one of the things that we included in the memo is that if we were to implement. The changes as recommended to, to get everybody so that they are market competitive. We would, it would have an impact on the fund balance. We really wouldn't see a crunch until twenty twenty-five, I believe it was, wasn't it, Stephen? And that still is being relatively conservative on the, the revenue side of things. As Alderman Hartman pointed out, we've seen significant growth in our sales tax. We've seen a booming economy in the community. We also, and all in the regular session, we've had more and more commercial development. That also affects not only sales tax, but it affects our property taxes as well. Because those, those commercial facilities are, are paying property taxes as well. So we're hopeful about that. And staff's recommendation would be to implement that three percent now. We do have three percent budgeted for a merit pool for May. That is separate and independent, and my recommendation would be to, to look at those separately, that we would continue to do that. And that we go ahead with the hundred sixty-five thousand dollar implementation. And that staff really, it'd be kind of interesting to see if there's any feedback from the board. But staff start looking at the holiday, vacation buyback, vacation changes. Some of the things that would be related to employee handbook as we would proceed over time, over the next several months and review of that. If the board so directs this evening, we could bring an update to the compensation plan. Forward as soon as the next meeting or the first meeting in February, if you all were, were supportive of that. And then we could begin implementing that immediately for employees.
So is everyone okay with the hundred sixty-five K implementation?
Yeah, Mayor, I am, I'm comfortable with that.
Alderman Yulidall, I know you're online. Good? Any questions?
How long are you going to take before it's sustainable? I mean, are we, we're just using reserve funds right now, right?
That would be, we would, it would be an ongoing, hopefully we'll see some increases in revenues. Yeah. And, and those are things that, you know, as we start looking at, you know, projections down the road and we, we see a turn. That, those are things that's all a part of what, what is, what occurs during budget review with you all, too.
I do like the idea of a floating holiday.
Yeah, and, and I wrote down in my notes to do two per year. We kind of already do some random ones. Yeah, Christmas Eve and things, but my company gives us two floating holidays a year. I think that's fair. And one of the things you talked about on the gap is the, the gap is one of the things that concerns me as well. And one of the things I was looking through in our budget, the elected official salary wasn't mentioned in this study as well. And I know it's not much. The mayor makes three hundred dollars a month, but I'm okay with dropping that to a buck to cover that gap. I don't, it's a volunteer position. I donated anyway, so a dollar a month is. A dollar a month. So if we want to consider that as well, we can. I saw Sergeant Morgan walked in, so this one I wrote down when I saw him, vacation buyback. I know you guys have been pulling a lot of time, can't take time off right now. I think I'm good with that. Does anybody have any concerns with vacation buyback?
Not at all, not at all, Mayor. I, I think that we need to do that. These police officers are working very hard. They've been understaffed and I think that's an excellent idea.
Okay. And then another one that comes along that same line is lateral moves. I've had a couple officers mention that to me from other departments. I know. Alderman Atkins, Alderman Yulidall, this is something you guys might have some experience with to talk to as well. So I'd love to hear your guys' opinion on that one.
I'm lucky to have a company that already has this in place. They, they only have very few different pay rates and they kind of rank it that way, not necessarily. So most of our lateral move are just nothing. They already know, they already know that in the job description.
Sure, sure. If I, if I may touch on, on that, because I didn't actually put that in the, in the presentation, the laterals. You know, the other side of our company is public safety, and so I work with police agencies all across the United States. And it's not just Smithville that is experiencing challenges with recruitment and retention with your law enforcement agencies. And so having a lateral program will, you know, just really help expand your pool. Because there are going to be officers that would otherwise like to come work for an agency, but they don't want to start from, they don't want to start at the entry level. And so that's going to open up your, your opportunities. You know, we have given the city administration an outline on how that can look. And it certainly is going to have to be developed, you know, before it can be implemented, before it can be implemented. But, you know, they certainly have a, a good structure that they can start working with right away.
If you're hiring a skillset, not, not brand new.
Absolutely, and there's.
Some departments have mandatory retirement, correct? So if we can get an experienced officer that was, had to retire and come up here, that's fantastic. The other thing that was mentioned in the summary was mandatory vacations. I'm one hundred percent for that. Especially in financial services where I work, that's required. But it also gives people a break. Anybody have any concerns on that one? Were there any other items on the list that you guys needed direction on?
Yeah, Mayor, this gives us a good to work with. Having the information about the hundred sixty-five thousand dollar implementation related to the, the position ranges. As I noted, we can get that around and bring to you within the next couple of meetings and, and implement that with staff. The other items that you've talked about, we'll have to work through a little bit figuring out how we can, can implement those. But we'll bring those forward over the coming months and, and we'll develop a plan there as well. Certainly appreciate your all's support in this and support of, of staff. I think this is a, a good step forward in, in, in working with, with staff in, in this. I want to thank McGrath for, for your efforts in this, too.
You were working with a number of other cities in the area, too, right?
Yes.
Be interesting to see. Is Excelsior Springs done yet or have you presented?
We're really, really close. We're, we're very close, probably next month.
Awesome. Any other questions? Anything from the audience? No? All right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn to give us a quick break before the next meeting. Alderman Atkins. Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'm here, I second.
Thank you. All in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Take a quick ten minute break, nine minute break.